We're going to start here in just a few seconds. I'm going to wait for the confirm that the public feed has started. So we are live now and I have seven o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. And before we begin, just, we're going to do kind of a roll call check in, just so we can confirm for the public. And we do have some staff that are on the call. The roll call right now will be for the board members, so that we can document for the record that we have a quorum present. And I'll just call alphabetically, and if you'll just unmute yourself and indicate here. This is Mr. Kate, and I am on the call. Mr. Gant?
I'm here.
And Ms. Gardner?
I am here.
And Ms. Hammond?
I am here.
All right, Ms. Hutchinson?
I'm here.
And Mr. Loveless?
I'm here.
And Mr. White?
I'm here.
All right, great. So we'll go ahead and proceed with our agenda. The first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda, and I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Beth, Ms. Hutchinson?
I move that we approve the agenda.
And we have a second. You can just raise your hand if you're going to second. Do I have a second? Someone? Anyone? Okay, Mr. Loveless provides a second for that. And I would, okay, we've got Jan back. Hold on. Jan, we're approving the agenda. We've had a motion and a second. If you will, raise your hand so I can count if you approve the agenda. I show that as unanimous. Does anybody disagree with that? Are we all good? If you disagree with that, if you'll chime in. All right, great. So that approves the agenda. So that brings us to welcoming remarks, and I appreciate everyone's cooperation. It's a little different. I'm pretty sure this is the first virtual meeting that the district, at least the board has done. I know the teachers and administration, everybody else has been busy doing that for the last few weeks. So just some process questions, not questions, but just some comments about the process. As we go tonight, we have staff that are monitoring the public feed. And if at any time we lose the public feed, I will ask us to take a short recess until that can be reestablished. It'll be very important tonight that you use the raise your hand feature, top left corner. You see the icon with the raise your hand. That way I can can recognize you to speak. As we begin, I just want to take a moment here at the beginning and just thank all the extraordinary people in District Five. It just has made my heart swell with pride as I have seen what's going on. Teachers, thank you. You were asked to pivot on a moment's notice, and you did so. You you've kicked in your creativity and your flexibility. You're making sure our students are still getting the high value education that we expect in District Five. So thank you. Faculty and staff, the way I've seen you support our teachers and administration, it's just, it's been amazing to watch. Special thanks to our nutrition department. Man, 45,000 plus meals. Dr. Melton may say more about that, but it's phenomenal what is going on. To our to our parents, thank you for kind of being patient with us as we process. The world is different. I understand. We are in very unique times. So I appreciate it. And really, to our students, we miss you. We can't wait till you're back in our buildings. I miss the sounds of what happens in the classrooms and on the ball fields and in our music and drama and everything else. So we look forward to having you back. So we recognize it's an extraordinary time, but we are thankful that we have extraordinary people to address those. So this point of our agenda is our prayer, and you're welcome to join me in prayer if you wish. My Creator, in this time of bewilderment and fear, we ask you to give us the courage to take care of each other. For those who are ill or frightened or alone, we pray that you would hear our prayer for them. Give us words to comfort one another. For those suffering, bring them comfort and hope. For those who are caring for the sick, give them strength and courage and protection. We thank you for for those that are continuing to do the difficult work that needs to be done in our communities. We pray for the unemployed, the disenfranchised, the homeless, the displaced, those that that whose life has just been almost unrecognizable at this time. We pray that they would find strength and courage in you. Amidst of our struggle, we ask for hope that will surpass our current understanding of what's going on around us. We pray for our students and our families. We pray for our faculty and our staff and our administration. We trust in you and your power working in us and through us, and we find comfort in knowing that you hear and answer our prayers. Amen. Thank you. That brings us to the superintendent's report. And so I'll recognize Dr. Melton.
Thank you, Mr. Kate's board members and community. For those of you that are listening in or watching this later, the remarks that I had prepared for tonight during my report are focused upon the last, we're in our fourth week now of closure and distant learning. So I'm going to wrap a variety of comments around just that theme. Know thy impact has been my mantra that I introduced last year in the first year of being superintendent. And what a perfect idea for the situations that we're experiencing currently. I'd like to express my appreciation and celebration of the staff. It has been an incredible accomplishment during the first three weeks, and now we're in our fourth. Since our closure on March the 16th, the care that our staff has expressed for our students, for our families, for one another, and for our community is simply extraordinary. The way that our staff has personalized their service, the phone calls they've made, the emails they've exchanged, the visits they've held, all the things that have gone into how we have chosen to serve our students, to serve our families, to serve this community, and to support one another is awe inspiring. I'd like to thank our teachers and our instructional staff. We are entering into our second round of distant learning activities. We're delivering to students, to families. We're also having families come in and pick up packets for those that don't have the opportunity to do things virtually at the secondary level, and then packets for our elementary and middle school students as well. All the information will either be delivered virtually or picked up by our families at the district, or delivered by our transportation department, or mailed by the middle of this week. School District Five was one of the first districts to implement distant learning. And because of that, that just proved that our instructional staff had the ability, the commitment, and they've learned the expertise of how they can reach to make sure instructionally students continue to be challenged and supported throughout this curricular program. I'd like to celebrate the leadership that this district has provided, our principals, our school administrators, the district administrators, executive staff, all of which are on this this meeting this evening. For you all to know, the communication has been deliberate. We have been intentional with our decision making. There's been a commitment to make sure that we are collaborative, but also a commitment to make sure that in every decision, that our mission is in mind, and our vision and mission this district have been our guiding principles. So I salute every leader across this district, throughout its system of School District Five. We may be closed, but we're operating at a very high level of engagement. If you look at our services that we're providing, our counselors, our social workers, our nurses, our mental services that are offered through telepsych services, our family services, it is truly impressive, the things that our staff are doing to make sure that our level of commitment is not compromised. We have offered the support and partnerships have been strengthened across our community, thanks to those that have resources that we can tap into, and thanks to those who've reached out to us, becoming new partners to us as well. So our engagement has been high, and our commitment has been strong. Our communication efforts, which I've alluded to earlier, I have no idea how we will ever find out how many phone calls we have made as a staff, how many emails have been sent or answered, how many times students and families have been checked upon. If you just look at our social media, you will see our activity has increased, and you will see our viewership and our followers have increased as well. Our communication has been responsive. It's been timely. We've been engaging, and we've had our commitment to a priority for internal and our external communication as well. I'd like to pause to echo what Mr. Kate said earlier about the feeding of our nutrition staff. This is our fourth week that we ventured into, but tonight I celebrate our nutrition staff, our family educators been involved, our social workers, school administrative teams. 133, 779 meals have been served to families during this four weeks. 133,779 meals. That is simply impressive and celebratory, the commitment of this staff to make sure that no student goes without. Our transportation has delivered meals and supplies and materials to families who don't have that resource, but the people that need it keep coming and sharing their stories. And because they have the courage to share the stories, that gives us a new opportunity to serve them differently if they've identified a need that we could be of assistance with. So tonight, board, I'd like to make sure you all know, we are working very diligently, very thoughtfully, and we have no doubt that our commitment is seen by our community. I continue to receive messages via mail, but also via email, which is very active, as you can imagine. Families reaching out, saying thank you to teachers. Families reaching out, saying thank you for resources. Employees doing the same thing. So I'd like just to make sure tonight that I give my appreciation publicly and in recorded fashion. I stand in awe and appreciation. The School District Five, you indeed know thy impact, and you've taken it seriously. And for that, I thank you. Mr. Kate, that completes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Melton. That brings us to the, well, first, I'll ask, are there questions for Dr. Melton, as we customarily allow questions at this point? That brings us then to the approval of the minutes from March 9, 2020. Do I have a second? Excuse me, do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Robert, Mr. Gant?
Mr. Kate, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the March 9, 2020 board meeting.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Gant. Do we have a second? Ms. Hammond and Ms. Hutchinson? I see a bunch of hands popping up. Ms. Hutchinson?
I will second that motion.
We've had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Pause briefly, any discussion? And seeing no discussion, as many as approve the motion to approve the minutes, if you'll raise your hand so I can record that, kind of just wave it at me? That looks to be unanimous. I see that as unanimous vote. Is there any disagreement with that? Any just any no votes for that? So that passes unanimously. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the emergency resolution. And I actually will be making that motion myself. So I'll read the resolution as it was provided to you, and it was included in your packet. Whereas on March 13, 2020, Governor McMaster issued Executive Order 2020-08, declaring a state of emergency in South Carolina based on a determination that's 2019. Novell coronavirus poses an actual imminent public health emergency for the state of South Carolina. And whereas on March 15, 2020, Governor McMaster issued Executive Order 2020-09, directing the closure of all public schools in the state of South Carolina, and authorizing each school district to make any necessary and appropriate decisions or arrangements to account for the local needs and other unique circumstances. And whereas on March 17, 2020, Governor McMaster issued Executive Order Number 2020-10, authorizing and directing state agencies to waive or suspend provisions of existing regulations prescribing procedures for the conduct of state business if strict compliance with those provisions therefore would in any way prevent, hinder, or delay necessary action in coping with the emergency, and further directing that, to the extent possible, state and local government bodies should utilize any available technology or other reasonable procedures to conduct necessary meetings and accommodate public participation through virtual or other remote alternate means. And whereas on March 28, 2020, Governor McMaster issued Executive Order 2020-15, directing the provisions of Order Numbers 2020-08, 2020-09, and 2020-10 remain in full of force and effect during the duration of the state of emergency, and further directing that, to the extent any political subdivision of this state seeks to adopt or enforce a rule, regulation, or other restriction that conflicts with the applicable executive order, the governor's executive order shall supersede and preempt any such local rule, regulation, or other restriction. Now, therefore, the board hereby adopts the following emergency resolution. For the duration of the state of emergency in South Carolina, and unless otherwise directed by the subsequent action of the board, the board waives and/or suspends all policies, administrative procedures, and other rules that conflict with the aforementioned executive orders of the governor, excuse me, of Governor McMaster, and any future applicable executive orders, any state or federal emergency laws, such as the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, known as FF-CRA, that may have or may be passed during the during the pandemic, any guidance issued by federal or state agencies, including but not limited to FEMA, the Department of Labor, the IRS, and the South Carolina Department of Education, and further authorizes the board chair in consultation with the superintendent to waive or suspend provisions of existing policies, administrative procedures, and other rules, if compliance with the provisions thereof would in any way prevent, hinder, or delay necessary action by the school, excuse me, by the board or school district, in coping with the emergency or otherwise, and carrying out the applicable executive orders of the governor, including making necessary and appropriate arrangements to account for the local needs and the unique circumstances of the board and the district. That ends the executive, excuse me, emergency resolution. Do I have a second? I see Ms. Hutchinson is offering a second. The emergency resolution is provided to us by Halligan Mahoney and Williams. It was not solicited. It was provided as they have sought to provide excellent services for their clients, who primarily are school boards like ourselves. So that's Halligan Mahoney and Williams that have given us this guidance. Its its scope is limited to the executive order of the governor, or such time as the board revokes it. So if we were to pass this tonight, and we decided in two weeks, we this doesn't suit what we are doing, then the board could take action to revoke the order. The only policies that can be waived or suspended are those policies that conflict with the executive order. So this isn't a broad definition where we could change or suspend or modify any policy, only policies that pertain to the executive order. A couple of examples would be to come to mind, we have guidance from the Department of Education, South Carolina Department of Education, on how we will grade in the third and fourth quarter, and how we count seat time. Those those that guidance is actually in conflict with our district's policy. So that's one of the policies that could be impacted. We have policies that require employees to submit certain time and attendance in very specific ways. They're unable to do that at this period, so that we're in conflict with those policies. So we're not talking about broad brush. There is a defined end. It would end no later than the ending of the governor's executive order, and it is defined, it only applies to those policies that would be in conflict with the governor's order. With that, I will allow questions. Someone have their hand. Mr. Loveless?
Okay, I had basically four questions that I wanted to ask, and I noted in there that in your your explanation, it says the end of the resolution, the governor's proclamation or order would be the end according to what you said, but then it says unless and unless otherwise directed by subsequent action of the board. Okay, and you're saying that that would mean that it would that that could end earlier than the governor's order. I don't read that 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 way. I'm reading that, that it could be extended beyond the governor's order. Okay, and do you want me to, I wanted to ask the four questions. Do you want me to continue with my questions and then, or do you, would you like to discuss these one at one at a time? I can't hear. I'm not hearing it.
I apologize. I was muted.
Okay.
500 things going on. Let's discuss them one at a time.
Okay.
Us a question and then allow others to ask questions before you ask the next question.
Okay.
So we actually, I actually spoke with one of the attorneys at at the firm that provided that for us. And she was very specific that it is directly tied, as it's written, it's directly tied to the governor's executive order, that the board could take action to do otherwise. But if we looked at it as it's written, it would, this provision would end no later than when the governor's executive order ended. So let's pause there, Mr. Loveless, and see if anyone else has a question. Other questions? Ms. Hammond? You'll need to unmute yourself, Ms. Hammond.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Thank you. This is kind of fun, Mr. Kate. Thank you for your time today, because I did call you and reach out for some answers. I think my big concern was the time limit. My concern was I felt, and as I told Mr. Kate, it's not a slam on his opinion or Dr. Melton's for sure, but I felt as a board, it was very important maybe not to give up our elected right to make decisions. So that bothered me. And when I watched the governor's press conference today, and he said that the legislators had to come back into session on Wednesday because it was important as we make policy or laws, and of course, we make policy, I am still very concerned with the wording as to how long it would happen and to, I don't know, I just feel like maybe with technology as it is today, and we're able to virtually have a meeting, I have concerns about just giving up that right to vote on issues or policies blanketly, as we've stated in the resolution. So that that's my concern, Mr. Kate, and I appreciate your allowing me just to say that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And of course, the policy is not a blanket approval. The policies would specifically be those policies related to our ability to operate within the bounds of our policies during this executive order. While we certainly can meet electronically, we still need to make sure our meetings meet the FOIA requirements. So that would require a publication of agenda, announcement at least 24 hours in advance. And if it was a policy change, it would require two meetings. Because we just don't know the breadth and depth of the policies, what we think we know today, and what might change tomorrow, as we saw when the governor spoke today at four o'clock, it's just a little bit difficult to anticipate how many policies may be impacted, and therefore, and the attorney specifically said, they started to kind of list the policies that may need to be amended or suspended and waived, and they realized they just couldn't, because what they would have done that day would possibly change by the time they could put that out. So thank you for your question, Ms. Hammond. Are there other questions? And if not, I'll come back to Mr. Loveless. Are there other questions? Any other board members? All right, Mr. Loveless, your next question?
Thank you. First of all, I, you know, I don't agree that the superintendent and the board chair are the only ones that should collaborate on on these things, because there's there's six other brilliant minds here. And I mean that. I mean, we come from from different points of view, and I think that's what makes the things good when you come from points of view. So I want to be, you know, I just wanted to put that out there and let everybody talk about that, because we're, we come from diverse backgrounds, and we're all, we all have different, you know, viewpoints on things. And I'm sure, you know, that that there are folks that amongst us who may have ideas and so forth that we haven't thought of. And I wanted to make sure that we put that out there, because I just believe that sometimes we could have a better approach to things than than if we just took it from one point of view.
All right, thank you. Are there other questions? All right, Mr. Loveless?
Okay. You know, we have emergency provisions in our policies that that we've long had. And I, looking at this, I mean, it just seems to me that that those emergency provisions were made with the understanding that we may have, you know, catastrophes like this. And I just wonder why, you know, why it's so necessary to be in a hurry with everything? I mean, we, if those policies are mandated by government or by the governor of the state of South Carolina, you know, a lot of that, we don't have much option in what we do. But we do have our own emergency policies, and those allow the superintendent to act when boards can't be convened, or or when we can't, you know, have a meeting for one reason or another. And I just want to know why that this is so necessary when we already have, you know, our own, our own emergency provisions and policies?
Mr. Loveless, they, that question about policies, obviously, we are in extraordinary time. We've never, none of us, regardless of your years of experience on the board or your life experience, none of us have faced the circumstances we find ourselves in today. And I think it's prudent that we rely on the advice and guidance of those attorneys that we have trusted for years. This is not a firm that does a sideline business with school districts. That is their their business. And when policies are changed at the state level, because it happens every year, that we have to update policies routinely, that the reason we're updating them, that is because language has changed at the state or federal level. So the fact that the state or federal government changes or mandates something has never absolved us from the need of making sure we were in compliance with our policy. I think the some would may argue that this is not being in a hurry. We are a couple of weeks into this. We know we're at least dealing this through the end of April. And there's a lot of work that's being done. Other questions or comments? I heard somebody opened their mic, but I don't see. Any questions or comments? Ms. Hammond?
Yes, let me get my mic. I'm not, I lost.
You're there. You need to unmute yourself.
Sorry, buddy. I did. I keep thinking red would be on you, but it's all, um, Mr. Kate, are we aware, and I know that you explained to me how our lawyers brought this to you, and you didn't get it till Thursday morning, and, you know, wanted to move quickly on it. Are other districts doing a resolution such as this that you know of? Because I called a couple of people that I know in other districts, and they were not, at least as of now, they may do it later, but they were not aware of a resolution like this, a blanket resolution. So I wanted to know if you, as chair, knew from our lawyer? So I wanted to know if you, as chair, knew from our lawyers if this was sort of standard procedure across our state.
This is the first meeting that's been held since they published this resolution, and they anticipate many of their districts will address this resolution. But since this resolution came out either late Wednesday afternoon or Thursday morning, we are, as we so often are, first. And so we're the first to take this up at this time. I saw Mr. Gant raised his hand. Mr. Gant, Ms. Hammond, if you'll mute yourself.
I just wanted to weigh in a little bit. I appreciate the questions that have been asked, and especially Mr. Loveless's second and third question, but I think you used a key word just a minute ago. You use the word trust, that we trust this law firm. And and I know Mr. Loveless believes this just like I do. He makes a very valid point. We do come from different backgrounds. We do have a board that speaks up, but I do trust the decision if you were pushed into this corner that you and Dr. Melton would make collectively together with the guidance of the law firm. And I also believe that if if time would allow that, you would more than likely be talking to this board either individually or trying to pull something together to discuss it. So I appreciate that. And I guess just in that area, I appreciate I appreciate the question, but I think what you said about this being extraordinary times really is where we are. And quite frankly, I I don't want you or Dr. Melton have to chase me down to get a vote or an opinion on this. And I think there may be in this an opportunity or a time or two that might have to happen. But just a good discussion and good questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say, and I certainly won't speak for Dr. Melton, and she can chime in here if if she wishes, but there if I'm thinking of the policies such as I've described, changes in personnel, let's say, the either at the state or federal level, they say, okay, you need to add an additional 12 weeks of of family medical leave. Well, that our that policy would need to be adjusted. Dr. Jakes would have the ability to bring that to the superintendent's attention. I cannot anticipate a scenario where there would be a policy attached to an expense that Dr. Melton would waive, or I would recommend waiving, without bringing that to the board. Dr. Melton, did you have anything you wanted to add to that that question?
Mr. Cates, and board, I very much appreciate this conversation and the opinions and perspectives that people have. It's very difficult to project because who would have projected and predicted all the things we've dealt with thus far? I celebrate Superintendent Spearman's leadership as a state education, state superintendent of education. She has weighed a variety of policies that the state board expect to be upheld. When she does that, then she and her staff send it to districts and for superintendents and their staff to work with accordingly. Some examples that Mr. Cates have given have all been appropriate ones, such as grading. If you look at our policy, the way that we grade students, and I'll use elementary and middle school, Ms. Hammond, you can understand middle school very well, of course, with your expertise. Because of that, we likely need to look to make some changes with our policies when it comes to grading elementary, intermediate, and middle school students that are not in course-bearing courses. So if we have the time to bring it forth for policy review or policy waiving, then certainly we would do that. There are some other situations of which I've emailed you all about within the last week or so. I've emailed the board confidentially some correspondence that I've received from a couple of agencies in our community that have needed some potential facilities. So if something like that were to happen where they said, I can pull together the appropriate team for either of those emails that I sent to you all last week, I am concerned if we would have the time to pull together a discussion to to waive facilities usage forms and the facilities usage applied that we have to charge to those that use our facilities. That's a policy that I could see that potentially we may need to waive and not apply a charge to a group that is offering a community service during this time that we know children are being compromised potentially and or it's a time that we could do a service to our community. So I could offer assurance, although it isn't written in this this document, that if it comes to something financial, we are not going to compromise this district nor make a decision without engaging the board. But I certainly am sensitive to the fact that we are successful because we have an elected board of officials that works together as a body. Mr. Cates, I'm not sure if that may help with the conversation to bring a little more specifics, but when we look at things that we are required to offer to our children with special needs, we are waiting, how are we going to assist our students that have identified services that we can't do virtually and remotely? That, of course, is part of our IDEA from the federal government in compliance with the state, and then we have things here locally. So Dr. Sutton and her team have worked on that very closely, but we've still not reached a place of decision making. So I could certainly update the board as Superintendent Spearman has done with superintendents of things that are being waived from the state level. If that becomes if this were to pass and that become an issue, then I could make sure that I communicate in a timely way, things that we've encountered that we didn't expect, those things that we can predict that we are sensitive and aware of, we could bring it to the board. And if you choose not to have two meetings to revise the policy, then I would leave that up to the board to decide how quickly you may want to take action. So I don't know if that is of assistance, Mr. Cates, but those are the initial thoughts that I would like to contribute.
Thank you, Dr. Melton. Are there other questions regarding the emergency resolution?
I had the last thing that I was going to ask was, I mean, this is this is pretty obvious, and I I think the rest of the board policies are still in effect. But, you know, when when you just read this by itself, it it does not indicate that. But for God forbid, say, one of the two decision makers here became ill, you know, we we would, you know, we would, of course, go to the board policy that reflects succession in in that and to the superintendent's designee and the and the vice chair. Is that the way we're to take that?
All other board policies remain in effect. Only policies that are impacted are the ones related to the executive order related to COVID-19. So we do have policy that states what would need to happen if I were unable to carry out my duties as board chair. And also, there are those policies that relate to who Dr. Melton would name in her absence. I see Ms. Ms. Hammond, I'm going to come to you in just a second. I see Ms. Gardner has raised her hand, and she's yet to ask a question, so I'm going to recognize her now.
Thank you. I this might not be a question, it might be a comment, but I did have an opportunity to talk to one of the attorneys and address the questions I have, and we have addressed all the questions that I had today, that the things that we learned from the attorney. But she did point out something that I thought was important was that we this doesn't give us the right to waive any of the state laws that we're following. This is just our own policies that we're waiving here. And that was important to me because we still will do our best to follow all the other policies that we that the state has out there. And that that was an important thing I just wanted to address, so.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gardner. Ms. Hammond?
Mic on.
Yeah, you're good.
Thank you. I had a conversation with the director of the of the Legislative Affairs for Governor McMaster this afternoon after his press conference, and he had checked for me with the their education person that this was not just a blanket resolution right now that they were seeing across with many school districts. So I think I still have a small problem with the wording of it, but I certainly understand, Mr. Cates, you did do a good job of giving me examples today, and and Dr. Melton, you have. But I think if it somehow the wording would would assure me that it is not, we have a building project going on, and, you know, there could be questions with that, and we don't know how long this virus shakedown will go on. And I I I wish there was some way we could put in our wording, because I certainly understand the need for all the different little policies where we would be ham putting a hamstring on our staff. But I still have problems with just this blanket resolution that we've, you know, taken our policies and we're going to let two people decide that. So I just want to I just want to say, I did reach out, and as I said, I talked to board members from other districts that so far have not done a resolution like this. And I heard us loud and clear that we're going to be the leaders of it. But I think as an elected official, I continue to feel in this crisis, more than ever, my voice is important on everything we do and every policy. And I would like to feel like I do not give up that power of my elected or as an elected official. So thank you. That's all I want to say.
Thank you for for just for clarity. And I've got two or three mics open, so if we could can mute. Just for clarity, this the the motion clearly states that these are rules that conflict with the aforementioned, the ones in the whereas's executive order orders of the governor. There is nothing about Elementary 13 or any future capital projects that that would be that would fall under the direction of this policy. It would be impossible for me to waive or amend or suspend any policy related to to that. Are there other questions? We have had appropriate time to ask questions and to have discussion. Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes, thank you. I would think I would say that this really shows that School District Five is a leader in moving forward with this resolution. You know, we we are always a leader. We're taking proactive steps, just as our school district for the past four weeks has taken proactive steps. And I keep remembering that the main purpose for us on this board and for the district is the education of our students. So we need to keep that on the forefront. I have complete confidence that our chair and our superintendent will contact us, will pull the board together for any issues that they that the board needs to talk about. I don't have any there's no proof. There's no proof, there's no history that shows that this these two people would not do what is right. I feel very confident about this resolution. It only has to do with what the governor's the governor's resolution says and his his order to this whole state. So I'm very, very comfortable with this, and I'm very proud of our school district for being a leader in so many ways and in moving moving forward with this.
Sorry, I was muted. My family wishes they had that button, but I saw Mr. White had raised his hand.
Yes, I wanted to echo a little bit of what I've heard everybody saying, but I think the main thing that sticks in my mind, and I agree with you from reading the the resolution. I mean, this deals with the fact that Governor McMaster, you know, executive order principally deals with the fact that our schools are closed, which is a very extreme event. And I think as a board, what we need to do more now, more than ever, is give the superintendent the flexibility to deal with all the modifications and changes and the the remote learning and all the novel issues that come up with that. And I I think, quite frankly, we need to get out of the way as much as possible. We don't need to hinder any of what I would suspect is her and her staff's schedules being very busy and very crowded, dealing with the unknown and dealing with the new circumstances. And and I do trust that if something significant were to occur, a question that not only with the superintendent, but the chair would would see fit to bring the board back together in a special call meeting or regular meeting, but I I think the key here is flexibility and 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 to let the the administrative folks in the district deal swiftly with this very unique circumstance. And I I think in some ways, that's allowing them to focus. I mean, the the big issue the governor order deals with is the closure of schools, and that's directly impacts the education of the kids, and that's the things that we need, you know, immediate attention and effort. And as board members, that's really not our role, but we need to let the administrators do what they do best and and deal with these circumstances. So I I think it's a and I do see the resolution clearly says it's for the duration of the emergency order unless otherwise directed by subsequent action of the board. So that by definition means we'd have to reconvene to take any other direction other than that first statement. So I I'm comfortable with it. I think it's a very good idea, given these very unusual times and and trying circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. White. Are there other questions? We've had a motion made by me. There was a second. We've had ample opportunity for discussion. Unless there's other questions, it's my intention to hold a roll call vote. Last call. All right, I'll do this alphabetically, and if you'll simply, when I call your name, if you'll unmute yourself and just simply state yea or nay. Alphabetically, it's that would be me, and I vote yea. Mr. Gant?
I vote yea.
Ms. Gardner?
I vote yea.
Ms. Hammond?
I vote no.
Ms. Hutchinson?
I vote yea.
Mr. Loveless?
I vote no.
Mr. White?
I vote yea.
That motion carries five, two, and we will have we have now adopted the emergency resolution. The next item on on the agenda is item number eight, temporary suspension of board policy BEDH, public participation at meetings. Do I have I see Ms. Hutchinson has raised her hand. Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes, thank you. I move that we suspend policy BEDH, public participation at meetings, while we are under the governor's executive order to close all schools, and that we resume public participation once the order is lifted.
Thank you. That's the motion. Is there a second? I see Mr. Gant has raised his hand. Mr. Gant?
Mr. Cates, Mr. Chair, I'd like to second the motion of Ms. Hutchinson.
All right, so Ms. Hutchinson has made a motion that we suspend public participation at meetings, policy BEDH, while we are under the executive order of the governor to close schools, and that once the order is lifted, we resume policy BEDH. It's been seconded by Mr. Gant, and I now, if you will, raise your hand. Mr. Loveless, I see your hand.
Okay, I'd like to introduce an amended motion to to agenda item number seven, and it should read, in lieu of a board meeting, public participation policy as exists during the timeframe that virtual meetings are necessary because of COVID-19, the policy be changed to allow citizens to submit questions online 30 minutes up until the start of the public regular meeting, and questions be read aloud during the meeting while identifying the author. The district shall thereafter answer the questions publicly when in the shortest timeframe possible not to exceed one week from the date of the meeting respectfully submitted.
So Mr. Loveless has actually offered a substitute motion. Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Ms. Hammond? Ms. Hammond, I believe you've raised your hand.
I did. I'm sorry, you need that to unmute. I second that.
All right. Are there questions regarding the substitute motion? If I understand it, it would allow for public participation by email up to 30 minutes prior to the board meeting. The the emails would be read, and the answers would be given prior to the next meeting. Mr. Loveless, did I capture that correctly? You can nod or wave or?
It was that it that would exceed a timeframe not to exceed one week from the date of the meeting in which the the question was asked.
All right, thank you. Are there questions? Ms. Hammond?
Yes, I I would like to. Yes, I, I would like to say, well, thing I, reason I second this motion and I like about it. I think with the, the gravity of the situation and how people feel, even though we're online answering questions from, I know Dr. Milton's staff answers people all the time and explains what we have going on in district five to parents and to people that need the food. I do think that it bothers me just to totally suspend with technology as it is. I don't see why we could not have this email. We might though, and, and I don't know how we would do this, Mr. Cates, I'm asking you. We might have the motion give our staff more time because I know we are not actually in the office, but we do have staff members that are working from home. So I'm trying to think if that week, the part of the motion that I was questioning, if a week actually gives Dr. Milton's staff being at home, working, if that's enough time. But I do, this is how I feel about this. I think to just suspend it, I understand why and they certainly don't, we don't need to have 20 people or 30 or 40 people online virtually trying to ask us questions. That would be, you know, to me chaos. But I think to just say we suspended it hurts this situation where there are fears and there are people that would like to feel connected to the board, not just to the superintendent and her staff, but to the board that they elected. And that's what public participation is to me, our connection to the public. So if we could have this, you know, I support this amendment because we would let them have a feeling that they have a part of our meeting virtually with technology as it is. But that, you know, we give our staff enough time to answer questions that have been submitted by email.
So thank you, Ms. Hammond. Thank you. I see Mr. Gant has raised his hand.
And, and I'd have to echo something Ms. Hammond said. Biggest problem, one of the biggest problems I have with that substitute motion would be the one week criteria. That's a more stringent requirement than even the current FOIA laws in our state. I don't want to lose sight of the fact, or us to lose sight of the fact that yes, we do have staff that are working from home. They don't have, they don't have every resource at their fingertips to research some of the questions they may get. I think it's pretty evident from, from what Dr. Milton said a little while ago, we are not out of the question answering business. Any person that wants to ask a question can do that by simply sending an email. They will, they will at some point get a response. Now, it won't be within a week, I doubt seriously. But that's not stopped. I know there's been a lot of that going on. I don't know how Dr. Milton or her staff have kept up with it, but I do know there's a lot going on. But I think that I can tell, this has been wonderful to do this with this technology, but add to this, number one, if we had people trying to phone in and give their public input, which we all value. We all have published phone numbers too, by the way, and we all get calls. So that's wonderful. That's the way that we as elected officials ought to be hearing from people. But to, to have this as part of a meeting, submitted a half, an hour before whatever that part was, and then answered within a week, I think is an undue burden on our staff. So I just wanted to offer that. We're not out of the business of answering emails and questions. But I just think that part of this would be tough. And I think with the technology, we're doing great with this meeting, but to do it any other way, suspending it doesn't mean we don't hear from the public because we all hear from everybody a lot. That's all I had to say about that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. White.
Yeah, I, I think I heard, if I wasn't mistaken, that, that Mr. Lovelace's proposal was that the answer would be read in public within a week. But, and, and I think that's something new and different. I know that people typically get responses directed to them. But, you know, part, part of this is too, you know, we're in the middle of a crisis. And to the extent that people have questions, I'm assuming, maybe the superintendent can answer this, but I'm assuming there are, are places they can call to get questions answered directly. And I'm assuming most of those questions about their kids and the learning and the teaching and learning and the, and the new processes. But to, you know, we've all been on this board for a while. And to the extent questions come through public participation, sometimes questions don't have answers. But what I just heard too was we need to give the, the staff time to go look up the answers. And I don't know that's any different than them just asking the questions directly while we're not physically meeting as a board where they can come if they want to present a question. But for all practical purposes, the administrators are digging to answer some of those questions. And the administrators are the ones that send the answers. So it's really not the board responding. We do have times where if there's erroneous information submitted, you know, we will respond in real time. But for the most part, we don't respond in real time because a lot of time the answers need to be verified and, and the information needs to be accurate. So, you know, I, I think that maybe if we can highlight a process for people to have their questions answered absent physical board meetings, then that can serve a more expedient path to getting them answers to their questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. White. I wanted to speak to the, to the amendment. And I want to do that by reading the opening sentence of the purpose of B E D H. The purpose to establish the basic structure for public participation in board meetings. The policy will not be used to circumvent the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act FOIA. It's my belief, opinion that the amendment basically alters, it doesn't just amend the policy, it fundamentally changes the policy and puts a timeframe on the district that is unreasonable. I have seen numerous questions that, that are answered. I'm sure Dr. Milton and her staff are fielding questions every day. You can see them posted on the district's social media threads. I'm hearing from parents about their interactions with the teachers or our parents and families. I saw something today about our school counselors, making sure people remember they were available for support. So there are a myriad of ways to send and solicit questions and comments to the district office. And we have, Dr. Milton, we have used your name multiple times. You don't have to speak to that, but I certainly don't want to, to talk around you on that.
So I think that was your way to, for me to unmute, so I'll take account for that. Thank you, Mr. Cates. Mr. White, I appreciate the question. We have staff that are actively engaged with email. All of our staff is retrieving voicemails. We have some staff members that come in regularly to check, to make sure that they've retrieved and are answering questions. Our communication staff and our school-based webmasters are directly monitoring our social media accounts of all sorts of social media. The bulk of our questions, as you can imagine, are directly related to our students and families that are experiencing hardships that they did not anticipate. So those stories that we hear about, we are directly responding with. Ms. Goggins is very thorough, as she always is. Anytime she hears from a reporter, that becomes something that she adds to her plate because you can imagine local media wants to make sure that when they communicate the stories of the Midlands districts, that they have accurate information from us. So we're engaged with the media, both print media and social media and anything else in the Midlands that may have, reach out, ask questions of Ms. Goggins. Of course, the FOIA process, as you all been informed about that, that has changed because of our closure and because of the access of staff that that requires. So if any requests like that were to come in, obviously you see how those are being handled on our website. We redesigned our website temporarily to make sure that that's being communicated with responsibility to our community. But as I said earlier, I will never know how many emails our staff has answered. I will never know how many phone calls our staff have initiated or responded to, how many interactions they have had. But I can tell you, I have yet to have one email of a parent that's complaining. I've had one email that I've received that I did not reach. Apparently it was caught in spam, so I own that one. But besides that one email, that was my responsibility that I have since addressed and resolved. I have not had concerns that the community does not feel like the staff is available to our students, nor to our families and the community members. That may be a different case because we don't hear questions from them quite as often as you may. So I'm, whatever we can need to do to meet the will of the board, we will certainly work very hard to meet your expectations.
Thank you, Dr. Milton. I also meant to say during my comment that Richland one and Richland two have both suspended this policy. Greenville has suspended this policy. And Lexington one and Lexington two will take it up. They have just, they, they don't meet until later in April. So this, this, we are hearing from the school board association. This actually recommendation came from the school board association. I'm a little concerned about taking the emails because one, we have a limit on time. So I'm not sure if we would set a number of words limit. It's impossible for someone to read the tone. We have all seen that in emails where we've gotten something and read it one way and it was intended another way. And I also think it's problematic if a board member or a member of the district staff would read a, a comment that was intended to be made by the public and now that it appears it's been made and endorsed by the district. Mr. Lovelace, I think I see you have your hand up.
Yes, let me clear up something. Mr. White said that I didn't say. First of all, what I said was that, that they would have 30 minutes before the board meeting to email in questions or however electronically you want to take that. It might not be email, it might be some other way. And then we would read aloud the question and identify the author. Okay, that would be only fair. But I think, I think you guys are missing the point here. I think that you don't understand that people that are, that may not even have children are interested in, in our school district. It's their school district. They are the ones that, that we need to talk to. They, right now, people are scared. They have different points of view from every, from all across the spectrum. And they need to know that they can ask a question and that they will get an answer. If you don't like the, the one week situation, what I, what I anticipated you would say is that, listen, I don't know the answer to that right now and, and we're researching it. And, and give us a few days to get this worked out, a few extra days. But that doesn't mean that you wouldn't respond to somebody with a legitimate question. And, and people need to know that, that this is their school board and that this is their school district and that their questions, you know, count too, not just, not just, you know, the ones that have children in the schools. And, and that's what this is about. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gardner.
Um, I just wanted to, to make a comment about the fact that I feel that those who are upset about this policy being suspended truly are not the ones that are always just asking questions. They have comments usually. And they want us to be, they want to be heard. And I appreciate that they want to be heard. And I would love for, these are times that we are unprecedented. And there's lots of things that are going on that we don't like, you know, having to stay at home or not being able to do what we want to do. And this is another one of those things where we're going to have to ask our people, our constituents, our community to, instead of coming to a meeting and raising your concern by voice, to do it via email or via phone call. But I want, I hope this, I'm not, I don't think I'm speaking to everyone, but I hope everybody would agree with this on the board, that we read our emails and then I take seriously everything that I'm, that I'm sent. And so there is just as much voice in an email or a phone call, if not more, than there is in just doing public participation. Because as a board, we don't generally address the public participation. We just sit and listen. And so that, that's my two cents on that. So just because this policy could be suspended, that shouldn't make the community feel that we're not listening because we will, we'll still listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Ms. Hammond.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The, the little mouse didn't want to get to the, to the microphone. I had two things it, it going with this. For one, to Mr. Lovelace, I would definitely support being able to feel they were part of the public participation in an email. But I do, I would love for him to take off the timeframe because I, I think a week's answer is, is hard in these times. So that part I had a problem with. But Mr. Cates, I'd also like to say, you made the comment about the FOIA has been suspended by a lot of districts.
I have not made the comment that FOIA has been suspended. I said this policy B E D H has been suspended. It is not, FOIA has not been suspended. Our ability to respond to FOIA obviously is hampered because we don't, are, by order of the governor, our office, our district offices are closed and not all of those documents are available electronically. So I apologize for interrupting Ms. Hammond, but I, I wanted to clarify that I did not suggest FOIA had been suspended. So go ahead, Ms. Hammond.
Thank you. And, and, and really, I'm glad you did that because that's what I think, you and I had a conversation earlier today. And, and I called the governor's office. I know that FOIA is still in full. It is still the law in the state of South Carolina. But what you're saying is because our staff is not there, might not could find the data, we had to let people know that either had already FOIA district five for some type of information or might be FOIA. Now with our, with the situation with the coronavirus, we were not in the ability to answer it. So I understand that. But I would say, and this is just me, if it's very important to people, we have first responders that are there. We have people that are checking out at grocery stores. I know the governor told the legislature that they were going to be back in session Wednesday because we have to be still making laws and we, we as the school board, as elected officials, should be making policy. If people are working from home, I think we do, and I'm glad you gave that explanation. I do think there are people that would wonder why we, like you're saying, we haven't suspended as a board the FOIA policy of the state. But we are saying we're unable to get these answers to them because we're not in our office to find the data. So I think I'm making, but I did want to make that clear. And that's a different thing than Mr. Lovelace. And I'd like to ask him, Mr. Cates, with this technology meeting, can Mr. Lovelace change that motion where he takes out the week to be?
It's been, the motion's been made and seconded and we're in discussion. And, and as we wrap up the discussion, we, we can, we can deal with, with that. I see Ms., Ms. Hutchinson has her hand raised.
Yes, thank you. Well, I have to say, Ms. Gardner, you, you took the words right out of my mouth. So I appreciate you saying that as far as, that the public still has the ability to email us. And we do take emails seriously and respond to them. They, the public can send the same email to all of us at once, including Dr. Milton. So they're still in the ability to communicate with the board. I also support what Mr. Kate said of the concern. And I, I had talked to him about it a little bit earlier, that if the board and board member reads the questions, then it may come across as being part of what the board member believes. And certainly could be edited that way. I would not feel comfortable reading. I, I just think that that's fraught with, with all sorts of misinterpretation. And that certainly is not our idea. We want to make it clear exactly what we're saying. So that's why email and responses to emails are much more appropriate at this time. As Mr. White said, this is, these are extraordinary times. You know, we, we are having to make a lot of different decisions. And the decisions we are making should focus on what is best for children. And I think that getting information from the community by emails should be work. And, and I also want to commend the superintendent and her staff for their excellence in communicating information, updating the community. It, it's just been overwhelming. It's, I get emails all the time. So I really do have to commend them on their communication of what's going on. So I, I think that at this time, we can suffice with emails. So I, I think that at this time, we can suffice with emails and we are not ignoring the public, those community members, as Mr. Lovelace said, community members who may not have children in school. We are still giving them a voice via email. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Mr. White had raised his hand.
Yes, I wanted to say add a quick comment. I mean, you know, when I've asked this question in the past, I've been, I think I've been told there's approximately 70,000 people that live in our community. You know, and, and if you count every one of those, every one of those people, you know, has a voice, so to speak. On any given night, we may have a half dozen people come to our public participation. And, you know, I, I think giving the circumstances we're in and, and curtailing a stage, if people truly have a question and they know somebody on this board, there's many times where I've taken questions and directed them to the superintendent and never bring them, they never come to public session. If it's a comment, you know, like you said, we're all accessible by email and has the same purpose. But I think this is a very minor part of the things that we're dealing with during this crisis and that we ought to focus on the bigger picture. It's, it's moving things forward expeditiously as possible to educate our kids in these very unusual times.
Uh, thank you, Mr. White. Was there other questions? Mr. Lovelace, at one time I, I had an indicator that you raised your hand, but I don't know if I had missed that or not.
It was up, but I don't know whether you.
Well, I'm trying to clear them as I take them.
You took me off. I just want to say that, you know, that sending emails, I mean, you could do this through voicemails. You could do it, you know, any way you wanted to do it. But sending emails to an individual is on a different level from somebody coming to a public meeting and standing up and presenting an idea or, or, or a complaint or, or, you know, or a pat on the back to people. It's a different level of doing that. It takes, it takes some guts to come in and do it. I've done it before and I didn't like doing it, you know, in the, in the beginning. But, you know, what I'm trying to say is that just, you know, th- this is a duty that we have. This isn't something to me that, that, you know, just an email to a single board member can, can suffice for. And I understand these are tough times and that's why I'm putting this motion forth. I think that people, you know, people need to do this, but that, that's, that's what I've got to say about it.
With, Mr. Lovelace, while you're there, will you restate your amendment, please? Just so, so we can vote on it.
Okay. In lieu of the board meeting, public participation policy as exists during the timeframe that virtual meetings are necessary because of COVID-19, the policy be changed to allow citizens to submit questions online 30 minutes up until the start of the public regular meeting and questions be read aloud during the meeting while identifying the author. The district shall thereafter answer the questions publicly within the shortest timeframe possible, not to exceed one week from the date of the meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lovelace. So, Mr. Lovelace, I, I ask him to restate it because I don't have that in front of me. The motion, that was the motion he made, that's a motion that was seconded. We have had ample opportunity to discuss the motion. It's my intention to take a roll call vote on the, on the amendment at this time. So we're voting on the amendment? So if you vote yea, you're voting in favor of the amendment. If you vote nay, you're voting in opposition to the amendment. And Ms. Hammond, I'm sorry, I see you've raised your hand. Is it?
Yeah, wait a minute, wait a minute, let me cut that.
You've muted yourself. Ms. Hammond, you're muted.
Oh, sorry, sorry, buddy. Mr. Gates, my point was, I support that amendment, but I'd like to amend that it not be a timeframe on the answers. I don't know if I can get a second for that, but I would amend. I would support the amendment with that, without the last phrase of to not be, to not exceed one week.
If possible, I would second that.
So the amendment would be to remove, are you saying remove the one week altogether?
I do not want a timeframe on it.
Okay, so the amendment's been stated. So we're, unless there's an objection, I will, I will deal with this as, as one amended motion. Is there an objection to me of voting on the amendment as Mr. Lovelace stated, minus the timeframe? Mr. Lovelace, is that suitable?
Yes, the word, the words that would be excluded are not to exceed one week. Those words would come out.
All right, so thank you. I'm going to do a roll call vote. If you vote yea, you're voting in favor of the amendment. If you vote no, you're voting in opposition to the amendment. Alphabetically, that would be me and, and I vote no on this amendment. Mr. Gant?
I vote no, Mr. Gates.
Ms. Gardner?
I vote yea.
Ms. Hammond?
I vote yea.
Ms. Hutchinson?
I vote no.
Mr. Lovelace?
I vote yea.
And Mr. White?
I vote nay.
So the motion, the amendment fails four to three. We'll now deal with the original motion as offered by Ms. Hutchinson. And will you restate the motion for the record, please?
Yes. I move that we suspend policy B E D H, public participation at meetings, while we are under the governor's executive order to close our schools and we resume public participation once the order is lifted.
That's the motion that's before us. It's been seconded. We have had discussion. Unless there's further discussion or question, I intend to take another roll call vote. So I'll give you a, a quick second to raise your hand. We'll do this alphabetically. I vote yes on this motion. Mr. Gant? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. In the middle of that, I looked down at my notes and did not see those hands. Ms. Gardner, I apologize.
That's okay. I raised my hand twice, so you can.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I looked down and.
I, I just wanted to point out one more time that the, the amendment that, or the emergency resolution that we just read said that we would accommodate, you know, it, it says in the resolution, I'm looking for the wording, public participation via virtual or other remote or alternate needs. So I'm just stating that statement one more time, that we just adopted a resolution that says that. But that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
So, no, that's legitimate and be quite honest. The first question I had when I received this was to call the attorney and ask for an explanation of that, if that meant the same thing to us. And she told me that was copied directly from the governor's executive order. And, and from her research, that was a re-enforcement of the law that required the public to be able to access the meeting. Now, we're, and that's why we are doing what we are doing tonight, that that did not mean public comment at a meeting, but the ability for the public to participate by monitoring the meeting. So you, you raised a very good question. You're right, it, it, by just reading that, it seems like maybe these are in conflict with each other. I had the same exact question and raised that question with the attorney when I received the resolution. So thank you for allowing me to clarify that. So I'm going to resume with the roll call vote. I'm going to keep my eyes on the computer real quick, just to make sure there's no hands raised. All right, great. I'm going to do the roll call vote. I vote yes in favor of the motion. Mr. Gant?
I vote yes, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gardner?
I vote no.
Ms. Hammond?
I vote no.
Ms. Hutchinson?
I vote yes.
Mr. Lovelace?
I vote no.
Mr. White?
I vote yes.
So that motion to suspend policy B E D H is adopted with a vote four to three. That brings us to our next item of business, which is personnel. Each of you were, provided your packet in a timely manner and, and were given ample opportunity to ask Dr. Jakes questions about the personnel matters. If you have questions, I'm going to, just out of an abundance of caution, you need to use the number in the page. We cannot ask questions that deal directly with names of individuals. And quite frankly, the reason we made Dr. Jakes available was so you could have your questions asked beforehand. For the sake of brevity and, and expedience, I'll make the motions and ask for someone to kind of wave their hand at me for a second. The first item is 9A, Selected Employment Items, Exhibit A. I move that we accept Selected Employment Items, Exhibit A. Do I have a second? And I see Ms. Hammond has offered a second on that. Any discussion or question? All right, I'm going to simply ask for you to kind of wave at me and then I'll give you a chance to tell me I was wrong if I announced the, the vote incorrectly. As many as favor the acceptance of Selected Employment Items, Exhibit A. Will you raise your hand for me? And that appears to be unanimous. Are there, is there any challenge to that? If not, that, that'll stand as a unanimous action. The second item under personnel, 9B, is 2020, 2021, reappointments as provided in Exhibit B. And I move we adopt, or we accept the reappointments, Exhibit B. Do I have a second? I see Ms. Hammond waving at me there. Thank you. So the motion is made and seconded. Are there any questions? Once again, I'll just ask you to raise your hand and I'll announce the vote. As many as favor this motion, will you raise your hand? And that appears to be unanimous. Is that, is there any opposition? So that passes unanimously. The Selected Employment Items, Exhibit C, was provided to the board as information only. That brings us to item number 10, Approval of the Budget Addendum Projects, Exhibit D. This is our second reading for these. So you've had the opportunity to ask questions. I do believe Mr. Cannon and Mr. Richardson are on the line, should you have an additional question. So I move that we give approval, a second reading approval to the Budget Addendum Projects, Exhibit D. Do I have a second? Ms. Hammond, she is quick on the waves. So Ms. Hammond, seconds. Are there questions? Because this is dealing with capital projects, it's my intention to do a roll call vote on this. So we make, and this also confirms for the public that we're all still on the line and not just me talking to myself. So I will begin and I vote yes to give second reading approval. Mr. Gant?
Mr. Chair, I vote yes.
Ms. Gardner?
I vote yes.
Ms. Hammond?
I vote yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
I vote yes.
Mr. Lovelace?
I vote yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
So second reading is approved unanimously. And that brings us to item number 11. And don't all of you rush to raise your hand, but is there a motion to adjourn? Someone unmute themselves and take your chance. Ms. Gardner?
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Hammond, seconds. Any opposition? So that means it's unanimous that we'll adjourn. Thank you, in all seriousness. This is a difficult process. You've done great with the use of the technology. I want to thank Ms. Garrus and all the technology staff. They provided training for us leading up to this that was above and beyond the call. I anticipate we will have more meetings of this format. Dr. Melton, thank you, pleased to your staff. And just so you know that I am at the district office and we're in the conference room and we're about as far apart. We, we have to use the technology to talk to each other in this room. We're so far apart. So I want to thank everyone that is here tonight. Yes, sir.
Mr. Gates, where do I send the amended motion that I presented?
If you will email it to me, please.
Okay.
And I'll make sure that, and you can copy Ms. Strange on it. But if you'll email it to, to Ms. Strange and, and to me, we'll make sure that we have that wording and I appreciate that very much. We're going to end the call all at once. I thank you to the executive staff that's hung in there with us tonight in this format. I appreciate your hard work and we pray Godspeed during this time. And, and thank you for all the hard work. Good night.